Doug always wanted to do the red skeleton. Have you ever seen that, anybody ever seen that?
Yeah.
Everybody needs to watch out.
He's now called to order, both the county commissioners, welcome everybody. Are there any items from the public? Hearing none. Need a motion to approve the agenda.
Did you want to speak, sir?
We can do that. It's gonna be awhile, but you can be last.
I can be last.
Sure.
How long can you be last?
Okay, alright. Okay, need a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Been properly moved and second, any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Ayes have it. Any questions on the purchase order log? There are no internal budget revisions this week. And we do have a change of status. Change of status recommendation, hiring recommendation received from Gary Wine, County Administrator, for Haley Monroe as a part-time scanner tech with a compensation rate of seventeen dollars and eighty-three cents an hour, and that is effective seven eighteen twenty-five. Change of status received from Gary Wine, County Administrator, for Eli Quinzel, Premise Security Specialist for an increase in duties and responsibilities with a salary range from seventy-one thousand nine hundred and twenty-five dollars to seventy-six thousand nine hundred and twenty-five dollars, and that's effective seven one twenty-five. Change of status received from Tim Zia, Directive of Community Corrections for Susan Grant, bless you, to remove from, as a part-time driver to a full-time driver with the compensation rate from seventeen eighty-two to thirty-six thousand eight hundred and forty dollars annually, and that's effective eight four twenty-five. Letter of resignation received from Tim Zia, Directive of Community Corrections for Summer Nails, Community Service Coordinator, effective seven twenty-eight twenty-five. And a letter of resignation received from Tim Zia, Directive of Community Corrections for Jason Orne, Peer Recovery Coach, effective seven fifteen twenty-five. Everyone was present for the July tenth meeting, so we can leave those in. We do have a canceled check from the county clerk, that's in your read ahead. Have a bond released from Summerwind Recreational Community. Doug is here to present that this morning, and that's BCP file number twenty-four ten dash three zero seven, and that's tied to twenty-four ten dash three zero six, number twenty-three oh four dash one twenty-one, zero five one dash eighteen, and R zero one one four four dash two nine, and that's for grading. Bond number one zero zero five oh four, five eight six nine, and engineering makes that recommendation. Any questions for Doug? Now I need a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
I second.
Been properly moved and second, any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Ayes have it. Next up is the assessor, Larry Hess, good morning, sir. Thank you, Doug.
Good morning. Okay, I've got, I think I've got about eighteen of these personal property exonerations, and for each one has a list of the reason that we've exonerated them. And the total, out of those eighteen, if you total them up, comes up to five thousand two hundred and ten dollars and twenty cents for theirs.
Okay, I need a motion to approve the exonerations on the eighteen personal property tax as presented.
So moved.
Second.
Been moved and second, any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Ayes have it.
Thank you. The only other thing I have is two divorces, and I think on the read ahead, they're kinda out of order. As I looked at it last night, then it showed one of the divorces, and then it showed another part of something else, and then, so you might have to read down for that second one. But at any rate, the first one I have is for Dawn and Nathan Blackburn. They had three vehicles, and they wanted us to split the bill so they could each pay their own assessment. And they had a total assessed value on those three vehicles, twenty-one thousand one hundred and thirty-five dollars. And we did split the bill up, and Dawn got Chevrolet Silverado, and the total assessed value of sixteen thousand fifty dollars. And Nathan got the other two vehicles, total assessed value of five thousand eighty-five dollars. So I need your approval so we can split that bill for them.
Yes, sir. Need a motion to approve the assessments for final divorce decree.
So moved.
Second.
Been properly moved and second, any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Ayes have it. Thank you.
And I do have a second one of Russell and Heather Stewart, and you might have to scroll down a little bit to catch that one.
Yeah, betcha.
At any rate, they had two vehicles, total assessed value of six thousand nine hundred and sixty dollars. And we split the bill up. Russell got the Chrysler with a two thousand four hundred and sixty dollar assessment, and Heather got the Nissan with a four thousand five hundred dollar assessment. And I need to get your approval so I can split that one, so they can each pay their own bill.
Yes, sir. Need a motion to approve the assessment of the final divorce decree as presented.
So moved, Mr. President.
Second.
Been properly moved and second, any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Ayes have it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Larry. Order meeting reports, Mr. Boyd.
I did not have any meetings this week.
Really?
Yeah. This week was pretty busy for me. Had a meeting with the, me and Mr. Grupe, had a meeting with the Health Department just to review some policies and procedures out there, and that was a productive meeting, I believe. Also had a meeting with Senator Capito's office and some staff from her committee on, it's called PW, what is that committee?
I don't know her name.
Yeah, but working on Storm, yeah, it's Public Works, yeah, working on some stormwater stuff, and still working on the new stormwater permit, and just seeing exactly what we can do to have some relief with that, with our stormwater management stuff. And I had a water board meeting on Monday night, which I did not make due to some weather. There was a little bit of flooding in some areas, and did not make it out to my water board meeting. So I apologize to those board members for missing that meeting, but other than that, that's really all I have.
Very good. Mr. Wood.
Yes, sir. I had a solid waste authority meeting. Just a couple things that, to note, there was three reports of complaints that, I guess, reported through the sheriff's office and a response going through there. There was eleven trips with a hundred and forty-eight bags of twenty-five point nine miles of road and litter cleanup. Let's see, they were complimenting us because of the day report program taking over the litter control, and it seemed to be a better response that, for the roadside pickup, so it's working out real good. They're very pleased with that. We are on par, or Beckley has a little different system than what we have, but I think there's, if I remember right, that they said that theirs is a corporation-funded recycling program, and they're well-funded going through that. Green cleanup is doing well, they've had six trips. They really like it when, when they get a lot of likes on their Facebook, because it's, people are paying attention and taking note of what's going on. So the last time it was posted, it was three hundred likes on Facebook, so they're really happy with their social media presence. Let's see. A little bit of brief discussion about Bursell and the, maybe the use of them coming in, taking over the old sort of property, but nothing's finalized on that. They have, they do have a couple things that I mentioned in the office about getting possession of some old equipment that's, that's still there. Treasurer's report was all good standing. Their mulch, Tunby Farms has closed, I guess, for lack of better words, and they noticed that there's been some drop-off of the amount of mulch and debris. But they're working back with, with Mr. Tab, I think, is one of the outlets to start chewing up some mulch, and gonna try to figure out how to get that back in, of course, again. Oh, it was a good meeting, Clint was in there in person. So he's having some, you know, his progress, I won't get into too much, but seemed good.
Great.
Last Thursday, like several years, we met with MNV Energy again, and the solar project, and I guess we'll have to see where that goes in the future. Also, last Thursday evening, I went down and attended the Falling Water Civil War Battlefield Association meeting, and it's headed by a guy named Gary Gimble, if you've never met him. He gave an impressive talk about regarding Stonewall Jackson at that battle, and his staff, and, you know, during that, that whole area down there, where that battle took place was the first in the Shenandoah Valley, there's a Stonewall Jackson monument that's on Route eleven there, where Reeds Pharmacy is located, and they've been doing some expansion of the road there and water lines and things, so the monument had to be moved. And the monument actually sits on property that's owned by Berkeley County Chapter two sixty-four, the United Daughters of the Confederacy. They own that little plaque. And moving it out of the right of way, they were, they're gonna be able to keep it on this small plaque that the Confederacy owns. But we've gotten the Shenandoah Battlefield Foundation folks involved, and they're gonna pay for half of the, the cost is like fifteen hundred dollars, and they're gonna pay half of that, and then the Department of Highways is gonna work and do any kind of service for the other half, so I'm pleased about that. We're not gonna have an ambulance authority meeting this month, but I did share with each of you the annual report that Brandon sent out to us, board members, and so I shared it with you, and I hope you're pleased with the ambulance authority, because they've made a lot of progress over the past year, and are really doing a great job in my mind. And then Monday night, I had a foreign land protection meeting. It is the application period right now through September thirtieth for new applications to be considered to be placed in the foreign land program. So they have till September thirtieth, if you know any interested folks, then just have them contact RISA with their office and get that application in, so that's all I have. Thank you, sir.
Very good. Bear with me here a little bit, kind of been a little busy. As Steve mentioned, John and I also met with the solar folks. They're trying to put together a program that, that will work for them, and try to work with the county to see what we can do to help them. Also, Thursday evening, I had a fire board meeting. Currently, they are understaffed, which is their busiest time of the year, so Donna and her staff are working very, very hard to try and keep up, and coming in early and processing stuff. Their collection rate last year was a hundred and eleven percent. So they're, they're on top of it down there. Michael Williams is the new chairperson. Michael's been on the fire board now for a year, and he's a very productive guy on the board, and he'll do an excellent job there. On Monday, as John mentioned, he and I met with the Health Department to discuss their licensing fees and how their process and procedures go. And I like John, I think that it was, it was a productive meeting, I think it was a good meeting to have. Gary, John and I did meet also with Senator Capito's office about the MS four, and they're working with the EPA and the West Virginia DEP, trying to figure out a way to get our permit, and that's been an ongoing process now for over three years. I did have an LAPC meeting on August the fifth, it'd be the National Night Out at the War Memorial Park, it's always a nice evening out there. Tier two reports are due, which any agency having chemicals or stuff that are required to be reported are doing so, and so far they have eighty different agencies that have been reporting. One thing I'd like to remind the public about is, in light of all the flooding emergencies throughout the country, you know, we do have a warning system called Alert Berkeley, and I would ask that if you're, if you're not a participant of that program, to please check it out. There's lots of different options on there, it's a free app that the county has invested in, and it's for your use, so please look at the Alert Berkeley. Tuesday, I had Parks and Rec meeting, their summer concert, concert series on Thursdays is going really well. On July the nineteenth, they're having a triathlon, if any of you are interested in, I'd assist you with getting signed up for that. They do currently have twenty full-time employees and a hundred and forty-five part-time employees. They had a major issue with one of their sand filters, in which they were down for a day, and their staff took care of getting all of that repaired. Normally, they would've had to farm that out to a private contractor, but they did really, really good work with that. And of course, they're still, you know, requesting a commission, you know, to put, put their levy request on the ballot, so that's still out there. On Wednesday, had a development authority meeting, business development, most of which, unfortunately, was in executive session. They've got several contracts working, people are going through their due diligence, and, you know, we're just, we're not at liberty to discuss it openly yet, but they've got several businesses looking here, and they're good businesses for here, I believe. Yesterday, we had bond closing for the Inwood Park at Bowles Rice Office, and I'd like to personally thank the Building Commission for their work in getting it set up, it went as smooth as silk, and I appreciate them on that. After that, I had a criminal justice meeting. Their DUI program currently has sixty-seven graduates, and they have thirty people enrolled right now, and the federal probation is at, currently have twenty-six employed. And here's the good stuff, with our home confinement, we currently have a hundred and thirty-four people under home, under, under supervision, that's a hundred and seventeen adults, seventeen juvenile, ten drug court, and one juvenile drug court. Forty-nine are pending. They have, they have eight home confinement officers and one supervisor. And this, this for fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five, they had fifty thousand six hundred and seventeen days of total supervision. The GPS monitoring rate at three dollars and twenty cents a day is a hundred and sixty-one thousand nine hundred and seventy-four dollars and forty cents. Incarceration savings, two point seven million dollars instead of going to ERJ, and the collective fees for the, for the monitoring is two hundred and thirty-two thousand dollars, so they're busy there, and they, they work really, really well with law enforcement and the court system. Our community service, we currently have sixty-eight participants in there, and from July twenty-second, twenty-four, we've had, they've had two hundred and fifty-six referrals and have completed three hundred and twenty-seven indictments. So they're, they're hitting on all cylinders, you know, five thousand fifty-one hours on roadside litter. Berkeley County Recycle is fifteen hundred and seventy-eight hours, Goodwill, thousand forty-two hours, different nonprofits, nine hundred and thirty-seven, Humane Society, seven hundred and fifty-four hours, Fairgrounds, two hundred and twenty-four hours, Supercell Little League, three hundred and seventy-eight hours, for a total of eleven thousand fifty-seven hours from community service. So, you know, you try to bring these programs about so that, you know, you can keep families together and keep them working, and, but yet at the same time, hold them accountable, and, so that's, that's that accountability all added up. Also, also this week, I want to mention, and thank not only Gary, but the facility staff, you know, for many, many years, we've had issues with flooding in the Judicial Center, and they've uncovered some issues over there, and hopefully, they've started to find the beginnings of getting this settled. But I just want to thank Jack and his crew, and Gary, you know, having this done, getting, getting it done, and keeping everybody abreast as what's going on there. So they found some problems, and they're still working on more solutions, but just thank those guys for kind of going above and beyond, because it took quite a bit of work. Alright, next up.
Mr. President, I have an application for the Planning Commission.
Yes, sir.
So I guess I need to make a motion to have the application, to invite the gentleman for the interview?
Yeah, we'll just set that up, do pending.
Okay, there's no, no need to motion or anything.
Only if he's put on.
Just ask, okay, to have that put on for the agenda whenever he can make it here. Thank you.
Very good. Okay, next up, Will Larson, estate hearing, estate of Wylla Franklin Reedy. Good morning, Will.
Good morning, Will. As was mentioned, the entirety of the business, fiduciary business this morning, is the estate of Wylla Franklin Reedy. Mr. Reedy passed away on February tenth, twenty twenty-five, a resident of Berkeley County. On April fourteenth, twenty twenty-five, Anne Marie Chambers presented the fiduciary supervisor's office with the purported last will and testament of the decedent. After examination, the will was deemed valid on its face and accepted for probate, naming Ms. Chambers as executrix. On April sixteenth, Ms. Chambers came into the office, the fiduciary office, requesting to resign from her post as executrix. The fiduciary staff told Ms. Chambers that since she had already qualified, said qualification was already on public record, and she had already received letters of administration, she'd need to receive, she'd need to file a petition to resign from her post publicly with this body. Furthermore, Ms. Chambers was told she would need to file an interim settlement of accounts indicating all known probate assets and their fates as a result of her two-day service as the estate's personal representative. On May twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-five, Ms. Chambers filed said petition with the aid of attorney Patrick Henry, as seen in your read ahead. She also filed an interim settlement of accounts listing approximately a hundred and seventy thousand three hundred and twelve dollars in probate assets, including the decedent's real estate, bank accounts, and vehicles. Notice of both this hearing and the interim accounting went immediately hereafter, and thereafter, excuse me, and no written objections thereto have been received from any interested party by the fiduciary staff. Without objection, this commission is scheduled to approve this interim settlement of accounts on Thursday, August seventh. This is just a weird timing thing that worked out, the interim settlement had to be published, so the next available approval date is on August seventh. To date, no appraisement of the probate and non-probate assets has been completed for this estate, and thus, no publication has occurred, meaning the claim deadline for this estate is still undetermined. That, that is a problem. However, the fiduciary office has received three claims of debt totaling in more than twenty thousand dollars. With that, and without objection from any interested party in the audience, I ask for this commission's consideration, allowing the resignation of Anne Marie Chambers as executrix for the estate of Wylla Franklin Reedy.
You've heard the request from Will, we might have any questions?
Need a motion.
Yes, sir, I need a motion.
And a motion if we follow the advice of our fiduciary.
Motion.
Yes, sir, I need a motion.
And a motion that we follow the advice of our fiduciary councilor.
Oh, I'm sorry. I apologize. Mr. Henry, if you'd like to speak to the, this estate as well?
The only other issue that I would comment to the commission about is, this was a pre-terminated child. Dad made a will. Son was thereafter born. Dad did not change his will. Son is a beneficiary. The two sisters, one of which is my client, the executor of the estate, plan to waive any claims to the estate and allow everything to go to the son, since it's all his decisions anyway. And that kind of, his issues, his problems.
So you're, so you're here to support the resignation of?
Yes.
Ms. Chambers?
Yes.
Thank you. Okay, a motion to accept the resignation of Anne Marie Chambers as the executress.
Should, should move.
Second.
It's been properly moved and second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, ayes have it.
Thank you, Commissioners. And due to the fact-specific nature, I'll draw up an order and have that on public record by end of business today.
Very good. Thank you.
Thank you, Will.
Next up, Chair Wyon Brenner, Deputy County Administrator.
Morning, Chair.
Morning.
Morning.
So this morning, some, some more continued exciting news for Inwood Park. I have two items for you. The first is a request to apply for a Department of Transportation TAP grant. As you'll recall, you already have one active TAP grant at Inwood Park right now that is going to provide sidewalks and walking trails. Region Nine, through working with them, identified another opportunity for another form of the TAP grant, which they have a high level of confidence will be able to install the mountain bike trails in the back of the park. The total dollar amount for that grant is going to be three hundred and twenty thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars. It does require a twenty percent match, and that match amount would be sixty-four thousand and fifty dollars. So Region Nine has provided a letter upon your approval today to apply for that grant that will commit to the match if awarded, and if you see fit, we can give them direction to continue the application process.
And it's, no, go ahead, Chair.
It'd be my honor to, a motion to proceed with this TAP grant project, the grant request. Second.
Yeah, and just to be clear, the, the other TAP grant is taking a sidewalk, I think, from the Randy Smith Center down Route eleven to the park. Is that correct?
There's going to be a piece of it, but the main, the bulk of that TAP grant is your walking trails.
Okay.
Inside the park itself.
Yes. Very good.
Just a quick, just a quick question. You said our part of that grant was sixty-four thousand and fifty dollars?
Yes, sir.
And what was the overall grant?
Three hundred and twenty thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars. It's a twenty percent match.
Good odds.
It's good, it's a good deal. Just wanted to have those numbered out.
Very good. Okay, it's been properly moved and second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, ayes have it. Thank you, Chair.
Second item we have is very straightforward. It's an acceptance of a zero-match grant. This is the Chesapeake Bay Trust Foundation Grant. They call it the G3, which stands for Green Streets, Green Jobs, and Green Towns. And this is a grant that was awarded to you, again, for Inwood Park, for a hundred and forty-four thousand, four hundred and twenty-five dollars. This grant is to install buyer retention areas to assist with drainage. And we're requesting your acceptance of this grant. The Region Nine will remain the administrator of this particular grant for you on this project.
You'd like to match on this one a little better?
Even better, even better odds.
It's getting better all the time.
And, and before, I, personally, and, and I know Gary will echo this, working with Region Nine on this project has just been amazing. This TAP grant, the CBT grant, and, and many others have come directly from them, bringing them to us, and it's, it's allowed for so much more expansion to this project in Inwood. Region Nine has just been such a great partner, so.
I, I've said this before, and I'll say it again, as being the commissioner that overs, that participates with Region Nine, and working with them in my past capacity, Region Nine is one of those things that a lot of people don't know about, but they manage and find a lot of money for the counties. So they are an integral part of finding grants, getting those grants, and maintaining and, and the operation of those. So they are a very important part to the, to the workings of counties.
Absolutely. Okay, you've heard, you've heard Chad, and I need a motion to accept the, the grant, the CBT grant.
Should move, Mr. President.
Second.
Then properly moved and second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, ayes have it. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you.
Next up, Mr. Wyon. Inwood Park recommendation?
Even more excitement, right? So let me start by saying, and to echo everyone in Region Nine. So as we walk through this, the efforts at foot to get this project started, as you well know, with members of the last commission, as well as you, Region Nine, your grant administration, Elizabeth Lapchek, Chad Wyon Brenner, has spearheaded a lot of this effort. You've got partners, not only financial partners, but partners all over the place with this. It's taken now the better part of, I know that I've been involved about five years to get here. So this is an exciting time. June the twenty-sixth, the commission opened bids for the, the, the project in South Berkeley, in Inwood. You, when you, when you had those bids written, and another partner, CEC, they did deductive alternates, so that when you saw the entire scope of the project, you'd have opportunities to reduce some of these things and kind of peel them off to get the budget, hopefully, to where you could afford to move forward. You had three responses. Triple Crown Construction in Martinsburg was ten million, five hundred and eighty thousand. Warner Construction, I believe, out of Frederick was fifteen million, six hundred sixteen thousand, two hundred, six hundred sixteen, two hundred and eighty-nine and fifty cents. Lance was seven million, two hundred twenty-eight thousand, eight hundred and fifty-two dollars and one cent. When we sat down and we looked at the alternates, you, you currently have five million, nine hundred ninety-seven thousand, two hundred twenty-two dollars and thirty cents for the project. So for all intents and purposes, you have six million dollars available. When we looked at the alternates, and Lance's was the low bid, they were, they did comply. They were reviewed by CEC. So we started there with removing the alternates, and I'll walk through the alternates that are removed. And some of those removed purposely, because you, you just heard Chad mention, we've got a, a grant written for a piece of it that would, for the mountain bike piece, so the three hundred thousand, our, three hundred thousand dollar project out of your pocket, seventy thousand dollars, or whatever it was. So all kinds of opportunities here. And I think at the end of this, you may very well see the seven million, two hundred twenty-eight thousand dollar spend. There's been all kinds of grants out there. But for purposes of awarding the bid today, we're, we are recommending that you remove the amphitheater, the dog park. There's, there's a loop, and I also put in, in my review, a picture of the park, and you'll see the red drawings of the things we're moving. There's a loop up on the, the restroom area to remove, the disc golf course, the upper four pickleball courts, buyer retention pond five B and three, or five and three B, the mountain bike course, which we now have a bid for, and to remove the testing and inspections from this, and we'll leave that in CEC's hands, since we have it a contract for it. So having said that, we have five million, nine hundred and ninety-seven thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars available with the alternates removed, that adjust their bid to five million, five hundred, two thousand, nine hundred and twenty-six dollars, a five percent contingency of two hundred seventy-five thousand, one hundred and forty-six dollars and thirty cents, and then the construction and inspections with CEC of two hundred nineteen thousand, one hundred and fifty dollars. So if you do that, you're going to commit five hundred and ninety, nine, five million, nine hundred and ninety-seven thousand, two hundred and twenty-two dollars and thirty cents. So you're about pennies under the, the amount available. So if you so choose, we can proceed, as you well know. Your bond's closed yesterday. That's in your bond account today. You have your other monies available. So with the alternates removed, you're ready to rock and roll and move forward, and this time next year, there'll be a full functioning park in, in.
Very good.
I just have one question. The pavilion, the large pavilion, so it's still going to be financed by the, is that money from?
Macy's.
Macy's included in that amount?
No, it's outside. That's already in another.
It suffered from that, and all they're going to do is erect the thing, put it up for it.
Yes, sir.
But that's, that's.
That's outside.
That's outside.
I didn't want to, yes, that's outside. You have the money for that. It's sitting here now for a while.
That's really a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars that go towards a project that we're not even including.
Correct. And there's high expectations that you'll get that mountain bike park from mountain trail money. I mean, and you may see other monies come in as this evolves. So we may be able to, we may be able to add back in some of these things, but for now, if the commission sees fit, you're fully funded to remove those alternates and take off.
Gary, could you repeat? What was the contingency percentage?
The percentage of it, or the amount?
It was a five percent contingent?
It two, five percent, two hundred seventy-five thousand, one hundred forty-six dollars and thirty cents.
Okay. So that's to cover us for overrun.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
And we, I, I should also mention Lance Construction did the expansion on the Health Department, and they were a wonderful contractor to work with. I, I couldn't speak highly, more highly of them. Their CEO was in multiple of our progress meetings, so it was a great experience. So I'm confident in their efforts also.
And, and just, and just for the public's knowledge, I mean, and just, I mean, if we're backing this amphitheater, the dog park, and, and these, you know, items out of here, that doesn't mean that somewhere's down the road, they're not going to happen, they, phase two, phase three. It just, this is just for the opening part of the park and phase one.
And the, the huge walking trail. I mean, there's pickleball courts, restrooms. I mean, it's a fishing pond, that, a buyer retention pond that doubles at a fishing pond. It will be a very nice park at this price.
Very active, useful park from the get-go, which is wonderful.
I would be honored to make the motion that we proceed with this and sign a contract with Lance to get this project started. It's been a long time coming, and people down the south end want this, need it, and deserving of it, and.
Been looking forward to it.
Been looking forward tremendously, and I would like to make that motion that we proceed with that contract with Lance, under the suggestions that our administrator gave us in terms of what to adopt.
Second that motion.
It's been properly moved and second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, ayes have it. Before we get too far away from that, there's lots of folks to, to thank on this. And Doug Copenhagen and Dan Doyer were the, were the two commissioners at the time that negotiated the price to be able to purchase that property. You know, Chad, Gary, and Elizabeth have been intimately involved in getting everything lined up for us for this day. Region Nine has, as Chad had mentioned earlier, they've just been champions. Senator Manchin's office, Senator Capito's office, Senator Justice, who was then governor, Governor Morrissey, all of these different agencies, along with our engineering firm, CEC, have all played a, a very important role in getting to us here today. And on behalf of the commission, I want to be able to thank them. Okay, next up, have bid recommendation for the pickup truck we opened last week?
Yes, sir. So if the commission will call, you opened bids for a, a, a small-sized pickup truck for animal control. We have one that failed. Trying to get to my read ahead, sorry. And they came in and were reviewed, and it turns out, we're actually going to recommend that the commission sees fit the purchase of a, a full-size issue, or a full-size truck instead of the small size. And the reason being is both of the bidders that bid on the small-sized vehicle, the bed size didn't meet spec. It was the very short four foot and something. So we can't even put the catch poles of the, of the officers in the bed. So they won't, we were hoping for an extended cab, long bed, but they both bid the quad cab, really short bed. So the, the F-150 from, he's, I'm getting my read ahead, I'm sorry. There it is. Is it in there?
Keystone Ford.
Yeah. It's Keystone Ford, but I don't have the amount because.
Forty-six thousand.
Thank you. My iPad's acting up. So if you see fit, it does meet spec. The price is a little higher than we expected to spend, but it serves the purpose, and the funding is there for it. So if you would, so be so inclined to award the bid to Keystone Ford.
Okay, heard the request from the county administrator. I need a motion, if you're inclined to do this. That motion will be Keystone Ford, a twenty twenty-five Ford F-150 four-wheel-drive supercab in an amount of forty-six thousand dollars.
I should move that we purchase that vehicle.
Second, Mr. President.
Then properly moved and second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, ayes have it. Okay, we're quite a bit ahead of schedule, and we're going to take a break. We have a public hearing at eleven o'clock, and we will be back then. All right, we're, we're back on for items from the public, and this morning, we have Mr. Knoll. Good morning, sir.
My grandfather was president of the county court in the old building. You'll see that he was president for years and years and years. And when he passed away in nineteen fifty-seven, they closed the courthouse for the people to attend his funeral. That's my home of fame.
Sure.
I moved away twenty years ago. I moved back in twenty twenty-three to KD Court, which is a dump. We have one elevator in service for eighty apartments. You have to wait when you pick up your meal at lunchtime. Ten, fifteen people at a time waiting for this elevator. And the elevator moves like a caterpillar. I don't know whether you can do anything about it, since you were the guy that was on the fire department. I have Afib and congestive heart disease. It would take the firemen five minutes to get up to my apartment to help me in case of this. Now, the building is being sold. The building is now owned by somebody in Las Vegas, Nevada. It's going to be sold to somebody in California. The name is Stele, S-T-E-L-L-E. That's the way I spell Stele. So nobody's doing nothing about nothing. They do not have anybody to mop the floors. The floors are filthy. It's, it was when I moved in, I had a panic attack. I've never had a panic attack. When you get off the elevator, there's a chair sitting beside the elevator. And you wonder, why is there a chair sitting beside the elevator? That's so you can wait for the elevator to come up. It's that slow. And now, they have opened up all the staircases, and there's a sign that says, if you're able to walk up the steps, you're allowed to walk up five flights of steps to get to your apartment. I can't do that. I have shortness of breath. I can walk down five, but I can't walk upstairs. And, and the manager don't give a crap. She's just there for this. And when HUD did an inspection, they said, there has to be a, a fire, the fire, it's a metal thing that's in the ceiling. Tell me what.
Probably a smoke detector.
Yeah, there's supposed to be one in the bedroom. There's one in the living room. There's one in the living room. There's one in the kitchen. But HUD said you have to put one in the bedroom. And so mine was the first apartment that was inspected. And when I said, when are you all gonna put this? Oh, we have three years before we have to do it. That's not the attitude, somebody that's a manager of an apartment. We've got three years. We don't care. On March 17th, that same package bag, my light bulb went out over top of my sink. It's like 13 inches long. March 17th is when I put in the request. I have yet to get the light bulb. I went down to Mike Lewis for the light bulb for $3.99 and did it myself. The maintenance man is worthless. A whole building is worthless. And the other thing, when you sign a lease, you have to sign up for meals on wheels. My neighbor across the hall, who is 97 years old and drives, I said, I'm going anywhere with him. He'll take the bus. But anyway, he pays $60 a month for this five meals, Monday through Friday, and doesn't eat a meal. He says, I wouldn't feed it to my cat. I don't know whether I should be here or the mayor's office. But I would like one person in particular to take that elevator and see how long it takes you to get from the lobby to the fourth floor. It's absolutely ridiculous.
Very good. Thank you. Thanks for coming in. Mr. Knoll, I will, I will reach out to the city building inspectors today and see if there's something that they can help with.
Yep. One elevator for 80 people.
Yes, sir.
If there was a fire, I'd block.
All right. Thank you.
Over and out.
Good to see you. All right. We'll go ahead and take our break. We'll be back at 11. Thank you.
Your brother's doing one too.
All right, we're back in session. Now we have a public hearing for the proposed amendment to the boundary on the North Tiff District. We do have certification and publication. Need a motion to open the public hearing.
Mr. President, please.
It's been moved in second. On favor say aye.
Aye.
Ayes have it. Okay. This time if anybody would like to speak, now is your opportunity. Good morning, sir. Please state your name for the record.
I'm Matthew Cole. I live in Falling Waters. I'm here today to oppose this proposed amendment. My primary reason for being in opposition is the general lack of detailed public information available on the projects that are going to be included in this and the means by which it's going to be financed. I read the public information available was in the county clerk's office. I would like to point out that that was not available until July 9th. The thing was published on June 26th. My detailed objections are the basis for the boundaries aren't publicly available. I'm sure there's some reason and economic development people are historically secret for, you know, they have their reasons for that and I do understand, but I don't necessarily agree with that. On the initial Tiff approval back in 2023, there was a 53-page project approval that you guys approved and on, in there, there was a reference to a letter from a bond council that explained that the finances would be okay, the value of the property would, I assume, increase and be able to pay for the bonds, but that wasn't included in the actual documents. So I'm not having that available. I wonder what is the basis for this approval? The initial Tiff included an initial $10 million in bonds for projects with the possibility going to $20 million more, I think, and this is for 40 million. So this is a big increase and the public doesn't really have any way to judge whether or not there will be a sufficient increase in property values to pay for this. So perhaps there is? I don't know. So not knowing, I'm going to object to that. And the other thing I object to is I don't see specific publicly available information as to what projects will be included. In the initial Tiff thing, there was some information in there about providing some water lines and things like that, but it's just not very specific. So with that being said, I object to this.
Thank you for your comments, sir.
Thank you.
Any other comments? Please state your name for the record, please.
All right. Good morning. Jennifer Smith with the Berkeley County Development Authority. I do want to apologize that, I guess, in the original posting, it did say to get information from the county clerks. When we were notified, the development authority did provide the information to the county clerk, but the development authority did have the information to provide if necessary. So there was a, I guess, mix-up in that instance. Part of the inclusion of this, all of the projects for the Tiff will be approved by the county commission, so all projects will be reviewed. The application does speak, you know, on, you know, if it could be a water line, sewer, the acquisition. I think it is used in a general term because it is used for any infrastructure that benefits the Tiff. But with that said, all of those projects are approved by the county commission. So the only project currently approved is the emergency safety building that is in the North Tiff.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning. John Steptone Johnson, Bond Counsel for the Development Authority. The gentleman is correct. It is written in very broad terms. This is a step in the process. From here, it goes to the West Union Development Office. Provided Development Office approves the amendment, comes back to the county commission for enactment of an order creating or approving the amendment. However, before there would be any bonds issued, as Jennifer noted, there'd be another public hearing. We would delineate exactly which projects are going to be included in the financing. As it stands right now, the projects that have been at least preliminarily discussed are reimbursement to the Water District for improvements to the water line that they're installing right now, their portion of it, not CMC's portion, but their portion of the upgrade of that line, and also road improvements related to the CMC and other properties there that are nearby. So those are the, there's also some minor sewer district improvements that are all, have also been discussed, but those will all be brought back to the county commission and there will be an additional public hearing at that time for any comment. The ability to issue the bonds will ultimately be determined by the market. The market will look at the increase in assessed values and determine whether or not that can be covered is what it comes down to. There's the faith and credit of the county commission is not pledged. There's no taxing authority of the county commission that's pledged other than the increase in property values within the Tiff District. So there's no pledge of the general revenue fund or any other, or any other source. I'm happy to answer any questions from the commission, but that's an overview of where we stand and the process that we're going through.
Anybody have any questions for John?
Have we sold any bonds yet?
No, sir.
I don't think we had.
No. And the increase in the value of the project is really to take into account the public safety building, or I should say, the increase in the total dollar value because the improvements that we're talking about with the road and with the Water District are somewhere, I think, south of $10 million, probably significantly south of $10 million. But with the public safety building, you know, we don't know where that number's going to come in. That's a not-to-exceed number, so we don't want to have to go back. Let's say we had put 20 million in and the public safety building ends up being 15 million or, and I'm just choosing numbers. We'd rather have the $40 million approval and then the county commission makes the determination of how much you actually issue rather than getting a $20 million approval and then going through this process again to go request approval from the Development Office. So that's why it's structured the way it is. But Commissioner, no, we've not issued any debt secured by the Tiff District.
The 40 million is just the ceiling so we can take, send this process to the state to let them.
Yes, sir.
Kind of like a line of credit sitting there.
Right, right. And again, the market will determine what can and can't be sold and that'll all be subject to another process in front of the county commission.
Very good. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Are there any other comments from the public? Mr. Cole, you've had some of your answers, questions answered?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Okay. Hearing nobody else coming forward, I need a motion to close the public hearing.
Mr. President, I move that we close the public hearing.
Second. It's been properly moved in second. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Ayes have it. Thank you. Next up, Jennifer Smith, Executive Director of the Development Authority.
Good afternoon, or good morning again. So I am presenting a resolution submitting the Tiff application, which everyone should have in their read-aheds. So this resolution is required to submit the Tiff application.
And just so everybody is aware, originally, the commission chose not to put this particular parcel in the Tiff and since then, with the steel mill coming on, we've decided to put it back in to help with some infrastructure for the Water District and possibly some road improvements there, perhaps that just will help benefit that entire area, so.
Absolutely. And I do just want to point out that the Tiff District, it's a tool that, you know, the Water District or the county can use, so the Water District, as they're doing these upgrades, do not have to go back to the general public and ask for an increase. The county will then use these funds to help fund those projects.
Okay. Need a motion to adopt the application for the Tiff District to the West Union Development Authority.
It's been moved.
It's been properly moved in second. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Ayes have it. Thank you. Next up, Jennifer Smith, Executive Director of the Development Authority.
Good afternoon, or good morning again. So I am presenting a resolution submitting the Tiff application, which everyone should have in their read-aheds. So this resolution is required to submit the Tiff application.
And just so everybody is aware, originally, the commission chose not to put this particular parcel in the Tiff and since then, with the steel mill coming on, we've decided to put it back in to help with some infrastructure for the Water District and possibly some road improvements there, perhaps that just will help benefit that entire area, so.
Absolutely. And I do just want to point out that the Tiff District, it's a tool that, you know, the Water District or the county can use, so the Water District, as they're doing these upgrades, do not have to go back to the general public and ask for an increase. The county will then use these funds to help fund those projects.
Okay. Need a motion to adopt the application for the Tiff District to the West Union Development Authority.
It's been moved.
It's been properly moved in second. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Ayes have it. Thank you. Next up, Jennifer Smith, Executive Director of the Development Authority.
Good afternoon, or good morning again. So I am presenting a resolution submitting the Tiff application, which everyone should have in their read-aheds. So this resolution is required to submit the Tiff application.
And just so everybody is aware, originally, the commission chose not to put this particular parcel in the Tiff and since then, with the steel mill coming on, we've decided to put it back in to help with some infrastructure for the Water District and possibly some road improvements there, perhaps that just will help benefit that entire area, so.
Absolutely. And I do just want to point out that the Tiff District, it's a tool that, you know, the Water District or the county can use, so the Water District, as they're doing these upgrades, do not have to go back to the general public and ask for an increase. The county will then use these funds to help fund those projects.
Okay. Need a motion to adopt the application for the Tiff District to the West Union Development Authority.
It's been moved.
It's been properly moved in second. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Ayes have it. Thank you. Next up, Jennifer Smith, Executive Director of the Development Authority.
Good afternoon, or good morning again. So I am presenting a resolution submitting the Tiff application, which everyone should have in their read-aheds. So this resolution is required to submit the Tiff application.
And just so everybody is aware, originally, the commission chose not to put this particular parcel in the Tiff and since then, with the steel mill coming on, we've decided to put it back in to help with some infrastructure for the Water District and possibly some road improvements there, perhaps that just will help benefit that entire area, so.
Absolutely. And I do just want to point out that the Tiff District, it's a tool that, you know, the Water District or the county can use, so the Water District, as they're doing these upgrades, do not have to go back to the general public and ask for an increase. The county will then use these funds to help fund those projects.
Okay. Need a motion to adopt the application for the Tiff District to the West Union Development Authority.
It's been moved.
It's been properly moved in second. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Ayes have it. Thank you. Next up, Jennifer Smith, Executive Director of the Development Authority.
Good afternoon, or good morning again. So I am presenting a resolution submitting the Tiff application, which everyone should have in their read-aheds. So this resolution is required to submit the Tiff application.
And just so everybody is aware, originally, the commission chose not to put this particular parcel in the Tiff and since then, with the steel mill coming on, we've decided to put it back in to help with some infrastructure for the Water District and possibly some road improvements there, perhaps that just will help benefit that entire area, so.
Absolutely. And I do just want to point out that the Tiff District, it's a tool that, you know, the Water District or the county can use, so the Water District, as they're doing these upgrades, do not have to go back to the general public and ask for an increase. The county will then use these funds to help fund those projects.
Okay. Need a motion to adopt the application for the Tiff District to the West Union Development Authority.
It's been moved.
It's been properly moved in second. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Ayes have it. Thank you. Next up, Jennifer Smith, Executive Director of the Development Authority.
Good afternoon, or good morning again. So I am presenting a resolution submitting the Tiff application, which everyone should have in their read-aheds. So this resolution is required to submit the Tiff application.
And just so everybody is aware, originally, the commission chose not to put this particular parcel in the Tiff and since then, with the steel mill coming on, we've decided to put it back in to help with some infrastructure for the Water District and possibly some road improvements there, perhaps that just will help benefit that entire area, so.
Absolutely. And I do just want to point out that the Tiff District, it's a tool that, you know, the Water District or the county can use, so the Water District, as they're doing these upgrades, do not have to go back to the general public and ask for an increase. The county will then use these funds to help fund those projects.
Okay. Need a motion to adopt the application for the Tiff District to the West Union Development Authority.
It's been moved.
It's been properly moved in second. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Ayes have it. Thank you. Okay. Do we have a need for executive session? We do not. Any further items from the public? No, need a motion for recess.
President, I move that we recess.
We are in recess.